Good evening, welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First, for those of you that tried to watch this originally on Facebook, we have some technical difficulties, so hopefully you've been able to come back and watch the recording. With that, I'm gonna ask, is there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, potentially, we will need a second attorney-client privilege executive session. During that time of the meeting, that'll just be based on some of our discussion on some of the agenda items, so.
Fair enough. Any questions, council? We'll adjust the agenda accordingly. Next, I'm gonna open up for public forum if there's anybody here wishing to address the council. Now's the time to come forward. Please give your name and address and let us know why you're here.
Good. I'm Colin O'Neill. I live at 1215 Red Bud. Most of you, all of you should have gotten this email. It's sent it about twenty, thirty minutes ago. I'm bringing this up as a concern to some actions that were taken on Saturday the eighth. I'm gonna read a little bit about from this email and a little extra here. Mayor Travis has been utilizing a Facebook page as a public persona as the mayor of Halsted. It does not matter that he claims it is a private page. His postings and comments are clearly those of an individual posting as mayor, not a concerned private citizen. He has his own personal family page for that. Prior to March eighth, Mayor Travis presented himself on his Facebook page as government official. At some point after that, I have screenshot, he changed it to public figure. He has blocked several people, including me, for being critical of the best project and has deleted comments on his post. Again, screenshot that. This is in direct conflict with the October 2023 unanimous voter decision and link votes agreed. And a comment on that is that they held that deleting comments and blocking viewers even on a government official's personal social media page can be considered government action when the official has the authority to speak on behalf of the government or entity about the subject of the post and purports to exercise that authority through his or her social media activities. While an official can reduce the appearance speaking on behalf of the government by posting a disclaimer that a page or post represents only private opinions, the Supreme Court warned that a disclaimer cannot categorically shield a clearly official statement from qualifying as state action. So, to that end, I respectfully request that I be restored access to the mayor's Facebook page, that a public apology be drafted to me personally, and to the citizens of the city of Halsted who either have been blocked or had their comments removed, or who can no longer see comments previously posted. The Harvey County now, the Newton Canyon, K A K E and K W C H have all been notified and some have already received copies of this email. That's all I have to say for this matter. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming in. All right, anybody else here wishing to address the council in public forum? Then I'll close the public forum and move on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda, I'd make a motion to approve it as submitted.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Consent agenda stands as approved. Let's move on to unfinished business. We have one item. It's a distressed property. It's 217 Main. Ethan, you wanna bring us up to par on that?
Yeah, this is just a loose brick and I will turn that over to Attorney Jantsch. It's for any updates.
Absolutely no responses, so nothing to update.
Okay, well then that brings in the handout we have in front of you, which is an updated resolution. The city did previously do a resolution that had an end date of December 2023. You can see that there. We would need to update that. Date that had given the property owner an original repair or demolition. They had contacted the city. It indicated a willingness to potentially work with the land bank to take ownership of the property. Since then, as the agenda memo discussed, you've been approached by one of their friends that was working on potentially marketing the property. But now that we're back to not having any updates from either party, even though we've attempted to contact both of, feel it would be best for the city to pass another resolution essentially asking for the structure to either be repaired or demolished. We typically on the secondary one have given timeframes of sixty days, so a little shorter than the ninety we have done on initial ones, but that is subject to you all, or if you have specific questions. All the things there in yellow will fill in with the dates accordingly of when the very first distressed property hearing was, et cetera. But the big thing we would want, need direction from you all is how long of a timeframe you wanna give for the property owner to take action and what date after that the city could then be allowed to take action if the property owner does not.
And for clarification, the date that you use is not necessarily incumbent upon you to do it on that day. You just, from that day forward, the city reserves the right and has the ability to at any time thereafter go ahead and mobilize, take bids, and have the work done.
What standard? Sixty days?
Yeah, it's somewhat ad hoc depending upon case by case. I've had it be as little as thirty. I usually don't advocate going less than that. You wanna give a reasonable period of time for an owner to do something, or at least get in here and say, "I will have it taken down by," so that you can approve that if you so choose. But sixty is often the number picked.
Is this property the subject of one of our executive sessions a little bit later? Because there are some things I'd like to ask, I think probably ought to be asked in private.
Yeah, potentially. Get in.
So we've got one executive session already down, but so what you're saying is this is going to be the subject of another executive session?
Yeah, we can have. I mean, if there is that, I mean, if we're talking potentially moving forward on a legal front, that was originally one of the impetuses for one of the executives.
Right, and so I think, I'd like to have an executive session regarding this. I think some of these, some of these dates and times can be figured out really quickly, but there are some things I'd like to ask that probably ought to be asked in private.
So we can come back to this.
If you want.
All right, well, I don't, since we're gonna take care of that in this meeting, we don't need to table it, right?
No.
We just come back to it.
Just be going on and coming back to it.
All right, well, let's move on to new business, and the first item is a pasture lease extension. I believe there's some representation here for that, but.
Yeah, just to preface the approximately sixty-nine acres that we bought, referred to as the Tebow property, has been leased for pasture through May thirty-first, 2025 is the end date of that one year. Our current agreement with the tenants allows for one-year extensions on that with the ability to look at the current rental rate. Just looking at essentially from when we proposed the first lease to now using the USDA and ASS numbers, staff is suggesting if the council's in favor of a lease to raise the price from the current thirty dollars an acre to thirty-one fifty an acre.
And looked at that USDA new release thing, gives us guideline, but.
You can just see, and that pasture lease, I will note, is the statewide average. So we actually dove down and it's a data table, and I will gladly send any of you the link, or if you follow the link, you can actually dial into counties. And Harvey County has a higher rate than the state average. So, but the thirty-one fifty still is, I would say, a market rate.
I would imagine to this point, you've already discussed this with the.
Talked renewal hadn't, hadn't reached out yet on price.
I'm sorry?
I said we had talked renewal. We had not yet.
Okay.
Talked price, so.
Okay. Well, seems like fair market value per acre. Unless anybody's got any questions or statements, I'd make a motion to approve a one-year extension through May thirty-first, 2026 on the pasture lease agreement with Jacob and Ryan Weber for approximately sixty-nine acres of city-owned property at a price of thirty-one fifty per acre. Directing this city attorney to prepare the amendment to lease and authorization for the city manager to sign amended lease agreement. First, went to the, to the updated terms.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to extend this pasture lease with the terms discussed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That carries. Next item on the agenda is a neighbor store funding request. I'm guessing that's why you're here. Please, please give your name.
My name is Dan Evans. This is my wife, Megan, and I'm here representing the neighbor store. In times past, I guess the last at least couple, two or three years, the city has granted us five thousand dollars to be used to help with gas bills and so forth for the people that are coming to the neighbor store. I have some more of annual report data. If I could give that. If not, I mean, I'll just more or less be quiet and just request the same thing again. But we, we did last year pay out of, to help people with their gas bills, thirteen thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. Our own store expenses for gas was two thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. And we we have store sales and we have contributions coming in from people and so forth, representing about seventy-four thousand dollars. So that's good for people that are supporting the, the store. And, but we gave out, you know, just paying bills for gas, electrical, rent, and medical, whatever that person needs, roughly forty-seven, forty-eight thousand dollars. We had approximately twenty thousand dollars in operating expenses, but a lot of that was going to buy, buy food for the food pantry. Had a hundred and six family units that were utilizing the pantry and so forth in order to get by on a weekly basis. We had three people that had terminal cancer that we were helping with grocery bills and medical expenses. We had six people diagnosed with cancer and they were in treatment. They needed food and financial help. And then there were four families that were on the verge of being like evicted from their house or their apartment, and we helped all them to be able to stay in those apartments. So, the neighbor store, and from my vantage point and from Megan's, is a real asset for this community. And so anything that you can give to us as a grant that would help us with those bills. I understand that the month of February was the coldest February in the last hundred years. Is, am I making that up? I hope I'm not. I thought I heard that on the news. So, there's gonna be a lot of needs and requests coming in for, to help with the gas prices and so forth. So, I'm gonna stop there and see if you have any questions for Megan or myself.
Well, I appreciate the stats on that, the demographic of what you're helping, what you're doing for the community. That's really great. Thank you.
Yeah, Dan and Megan, thank you for taking time to come in and present that information. I, my question would be, if there were community members that needed resources and weren't sure how to do that, what's the best way to get in contact with someone in order to get aid in, in those situations? I will be real honest, I don't know that.
Okay. We are there, not myself, but Megan and others are there. You want to come up and help on, on Monday, on Monday afternoons. We encourage anybody that is needing food or supplies or anything to come in and talk to the staff at that time. I'll let Megan expand upon that a little bit.
The pantry site is open on Monday afternoons, one to five. And so people do come in and ask for food assistance, and we also do government commodities. We are the area person, so we have Burton, Bentley, and Halsted, anyone in the Halsted School District. So, but we also, on Monday afternoons, we have one person who sits with them, visits with them, goes over their finances, sees how we can help and how they can help. Because we're, we're still trying to not just give fish, but help them learn to fish, kind of a thing. So, so Monday afternoons, any stores open, you can come in anytime.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Anything else?
I might add one, one little piece of information.
You gave her a chance. I'll tell you this.
We have a couple of people that are still paying monthly, and you, you may be able to agree to this, on the, those gas bills from twenty-one. And they're paying twenty dollars or forty dollars a month toward the bills that they got at that time. So we're trying to help them at least stay in their homes, so. It's a hard thing.
Just to piggyback on that and so forth, since we're here requesting, if, if that could ever be like eliminated or like forgiven, I guess is what you call that, that would be great, because it really will help those people. People that are trying to make it through all tough times, and they're making payments and everything, and they may not be able to do it every single month. I'm not saying that they're, you know, they're doing in a, in a perfect manner, but that would be helpful for, for those people. Truly, it would. Plus, anything else that you could grant to us to, to help us out with the gas bills that are gonna be forthcoming here?
Well, unless there's any more questions or discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the annual donation to the neighbor store for amount of not exceed five thousand dollars.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the annual grant to the neighbor store. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you so much for your service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is twenty-twenty-five dragon grant applications.
Thank you. Dragon grants were started in 2018. Since that time, we've given just shy now of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out in dragon grants to thirty different businesses or organizations in downtown Halsted or the larger area, which is still mostly downtown. This, the, since the last updated, the city considers any pending or submitted dragon grants at the first meeting in March. We had one application. Is that right, Julie? On, from Halsted Tire?
Oh, my goodness, no.
Okay. We had one application come in from Henry's Chase, I believe. And I apologize, the wrong.
That was my fault.
No, we got in there. And Julie, we have that, because I don't have the details. I believe she's asking for the full. Ten thousand, and it is to do windows and doors in the back of the building, brick needing to be re-tucked and painted, and then the front awning getting maintenance. And she is working because that awning at Henry's Chase is shared. And so I have talked to like Alan, and they're in favor of the project as well and agreeing to it. So this will potentially benefit not only her property, but the others in terms of that awning repair. She has provided the substantiating documentation that the project should cost more than the requested ten thousand. And of course, we will do our due diligence on following up with her to make sure the project is completed appropriately. Again, we've only ever had one dragon grant project that was not completed, and the city did recoup the money from that project, so. It's been a very, very successful, very appreciative to our downtown businesses that have utilized the program, and then again, we've done our part as city staff to try and not make it an overly onerous process for them to either apply or to show compliance with the program once they've spent those funds, so. We would recommend approval of that ten thousand dollar dragon grant. And then for the remaining funds that were authorized in twenty-twenty-five, they essentially, as we get any more applications, we'll bring them all for you all on a case-by-case basis. But this first meeting as March is when we do the competitive, if we actually get requests that exceed the need, so. Any questions and apologies for that agenda memo? We were having some issues on Friday with the phone conversions and all that on the tech side, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the dragon grant to Henry's Chase for amount not exceed ten thousand.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the dragon grant for Henry Chase. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That carries. All right, last item under new business. Mr. Everly, looks like he'd like to change the golf course logo out for Wedgwood Golf Course. Man, what's wrong with our logo that we've had all these years, Sam?
Yep. So I, thank you for letting me come up here and speak about this. So over the last year, year and a half, we have been trying to figure out new ways to market the course. We've done some things with some other businesses, you know, went out. But our, the one thing I feel that's kind of holding us back is our logo, and it's really hard to put it on hats, balls, you know, equipment, things we can sell in the clubhouse. One of the main reasons is we don't have a digital file of our logo. So every time I have to take my logo to get put on a shirt or a hat, we have to modify the logo. So like, here, I'll pass these out. I forgot to do that, sorry.
That, that's about a hundred dollar setup charge every time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm hitting it hard today. As you can see, on our logo down the bottom left corner, on the bottom, it says the biggest little golf course in Kansas. Well, if you try to put that logo like this, you can't do it. You, you can't read the words. There's not a way to shrink it down or make it bigger to make it work. And, thanks. That's okay. And so, our new idea was to come up with a logo, something that can rebrand, something that can get our name out there again. And the new logo design that I, we have chosen comes from our windmill that we have on the course, which is a big sunflower. It's painted as a sunflower. You can see in the bottom right corner. We just actually had it repainted this year. And what what we would like to do is make our logo that, because when people come to the course, that's the one thing they remember. That's what bring, when they come out, we remember your course because of the big windmill that has the sunflower. It's not something you see every day. So we wanted to incorporate that and make it make it stand out for us. And the big thing that we're doing this year, so this is the fortieth anniversary of Wedgwood. So on May third, we're having this big celebration. We're rolling back prices to nineteen eighty-five. We're doing games on the course. We're gonna have activities for the community, lunch. And I'd like to have a rededication and show this new logo off during that time. And then we'll be putting on golf balls, hats, clothing, and some other items around the course that will make the course look real nice.
Have you picked your logo yet off of these this year?
So it's the top one. Which, which one? Okay, some of you got the wrong one.
I know, I was like, wait a second, I don't have other ones. As a matter of fact, I was gonna be like, yeah, I didn't get that. Yeah, we got the same. We didn't get all the, we didn't get all the fancy ones. Yeah, we got the same. We didn't get all the, we didn't go the fancy ones, voices.
So the logo we chose is the big one. It really shows off the sunflower. And it's real simple, which if you look at our other logo, it's real complex. I feel it gets our name out there. It's what people remember, and I think it looks great. You know, we're still kind of working with the, you know, blue around the Wedgewood and stuff like that, but I think going forward, this would be the logo I would choose to rebrand the course. Any questions, comments?
It looks fine to me. I don't golf, so I don't really have the dog in this hat.
I, yeah, I, whatever, I would, I just was saying, I wish it had, the logo had something that was like golf or like, I get the windmill because it's out there, but I, like, but I don't golf either, so I support whatever you.
I actually like that one the best.
Which one?
This one with the W and the wheat stalk in the middle of it.
Yeah, I like the, the one above it too.
Did you design these?
I did not.
Oh, you did. You did. Clever, because you're kind of out in the middle of.
Yeah, so I really liked the wheat one, and then come to find out, there are a lot of cities and courses around us that use that in their logo, and I kind of want to stay away from that.
Yeah, it was clever, for sure.
Because it's, it's simple.
It's very simple, yeah, that, I, yeah, I, I really liked it, but then they came up with this. It ties in our windmill, it ties in our name, and I, I think it looks real clean. I think it looks pushing us forward.
Looks good, looks good.
Did you just have one of your staff members?
No, this is done through Company and Newton.
Oh, for sure, okay.
So if we approve this new logo, are you gonna give us a projection on how much your membership will increase?
Sure. It's only a projection.
No, it's up to the council. I don't have an issue with it.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it. Do you need a consensus, or do you need?
When is, when is your pick off?
May third.
I want to call. I want to be there.
Okay, everybody's invited.
I want to know. I want to be.
It'll be, it'll be a cool deal.
Is that a Saturday?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm like without looking at my calendar. Oh, in the morning?
It's an all-day deal. So we're going to have golf in the morning. We're gonna have a lunch around eleven, and a rededication around eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock.
Got it.
So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to share?
I can share this. Sure, so, you know, we, in two thousand nineteen, we did the clubhouse renovations. You know, the floor didn't pan out like we thought it would, so we put in a new epoxy floor on Wednesday, and they finished on Thursday, and it has changed that clubhouse drastically. It's a lot brighter, you know, there's a, we'll, we'll be able to have more wear and tear on the floor, which I'm really excited about. We're not gonna have those slip and trip hazards. We're not gonna have the little problems that we had with the click lock cracking.
Cleats on that new floor, are you?
So they don't make the cleat golf shoe anymore. I mean, very rarely.
The old gentleman that might come in.
Very rarely do you see the cleats, nor are they just rubber, rubber bottoms.
It'd be, that'd be the only concern I'd have is watch for that, so, yep.
We went with a thicker plake, so it's actually popped up a little bit more off the ground, so the slip is, is a lot better.
For traction, yeah.
Yeah, so, I am very pleased with it. It went very well. They're really quick and very professional, so.
So May third, breakfast for council members, and then lunch for council members on the.
Sounds great.
All right, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
All right, it is time for that executive session. Are you ready to make that motion, Jim?
I will as soon as I have it.
It's, it's in, it's in good hands, being prepared for you right now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation. Consultation with the attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in a current client relationship exemption, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two, to include the city manager, the city attorney, to reconvene at seven fifty-five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who same sign, we are in executive session. We'll move to the back room, council.
Go ahead, Pat.
Okay.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of?
April fourteenth would be the thirty day date to coincide with the meeting.
Have you called this back yet?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on regarding the distressed property at two seventeen Main is adopted resolution number twenty twenty five dash oh two, resolution finding the structure located at two seventeen Main Street in city of Halsted, Harvey County, is unsafe or dangerous and directing that the structure be demolished and the premises be made safe and secure. And give a thirty day notification.
Action date of April fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
April fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this resolution twenty twenty five dash oh two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So same sign, motion carries. Thanks, counsel. We do have a second executive session on the agenda tonight, and I would entertain that motion now. As soon as Jim gets it.
Apologies.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss contract negotiations, to consult the city attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption case A seventy five dash forty three nineteen B two to include the city manager, the city attorney reconvene at eight fifteen.
Second. Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So same, same sign. Okay, we'll move back to the back room again.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? All right, not hearing from the council, we're going to move on to our report section of the agenda. We'll start with governing body comments, and I'll start with you first, Jim.
I just want to wish the Lady Dragons a good luck on Wednesday, and go Dragons.
Absolutely. Charlie?
There's a K-Dogs putting on a Bike to School Day on May the 7th. We might want to get in on that. I think mine's turned on. Oh, sorry about that. Really? I'll turn my hearing aids up. And I think that'd be a neat thing to do. Anything else that I have, I think I'll bring up Wednesday night in our... Don't we have a meeting Wednesday night?
Work session, yeah.
Work session Wednesday night, yeah. I'll bring it up then.
All right.
George?
I do have some. Full disclosure, I was requested this by a member of the church that I go to. The alley on the east side of our church, a lot of the elderly patrons, they'll park in the handicap spots there, then they go south up the alley. Alley graded a little bit. It's got a lot of potholes in it, so mainly the elderly folks go up the alley. So they asked me if I could ask about maybe getting that alley graded some.
First Men and Night?
First Men and Night Church, just south of Scout Park.
On the east side.
Yeah, and then the next thing is, I actually had somebody from the Golden Harvest ask about that scaffolding that's out there. Is that guy done doing his tuck pointing? And you guys don't have anything to do with that, do you? That would...
No, we don't require a permit.
Joel's, that's Joel's building, isn't it?
It's Leroy Evey that's...
Yeah, that's okay. That's what she's gonna have to reach out to is Joel. Okay.
That would be considered a cosmetic project.
Yes, yes, okay.
That's all I have.
All right, Shawna?
I guess I will ditto Jim in regards to wishing the girls' basketball team best of luck this week as they go and battle for a state championship. And just encourage anyone, I know two o'clock in the afternoon is tough, but you know, the girls have, you know, been working really hard, and I think it's great to see the community come out and support them. And so, you know, that, and then with the warmer weather and things like that, just, you know, be mindful of the extra pedestrians out and about as you're navigating the streets. Because there's a lot of people out these days, you know, so...
Badgers out in their golf carts today.
Yes, and the golf carts too, so just...
Which reminds me, make sure you've renewed your golf cart registration. I just got mine done the other day, and I haven't even had my golf cart out yet. Denise?
Yeah, put your sticker on. Other than congratulations to the Lady Dragons on a fantastic season, and I love going to Hutch for Acacia basketball. They always put on a, they always do, they always do well, let's put it that way, as far as, it's a great venue to go watch basketball. So good luck, Lady Dragons, and that's all I've got for tonight.
All right, well, I do have a proclamation, but I'm gonna do my Andy Reid and say, "How about them Dragons?" And hopefully them girls will go tear it up and get it done for us. So tonight's proclamation is the National Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day proclamation. Whereas a way to recognize natural gas utility workers for their hard work and accomplishments, in 2015, the American Public Gas Association began recognizing March 18th as Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day. And whereas natural gas utility workers provide one of the most valuable assets, natural gas, and whereas safety is a vital aspect to natural gas distribution and employees of distribution companies endeavor to make natural gas delivery as safe as possible, and whereas natural gas utility workers are essential responders during storms, like the recent Arctic weather event where they worked through brutal conditions to prevent even a single Kansas outage, now therefore I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, do hereby proclaim March 18th, 2025 as National Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day in recognition of the dedication of these workers to our community. So Pat, take an extra minute at lunch. Well, we will move on to our city manager, risk manager report, and then you can go ahead and move into your financial after that, Ethan.
Yeah, and I'm going to apologize, we will actually do the financial report next time. I should have noted that in the agenda changes. But for the manager's report, the city has completed transitioning to the .gov domain for the city website, and then city-specific emails, so all of your emails kept basically the same nomenclature, just changed to @halstedks.gov. But if any of you experience issues with your governing body emails, please reach out to myself, to Julie, and we will assist you with that transition, but you hopefully don't see any sort of interruption or issue. The city did switch our voiceover IP vendor last Thursday. We are still working out a few of the kinks from that switch over from one vendor to another, but overall, we believe the majority of calls are now getting through a majority of the time, and some of the other unanticipated issues that always seem to come with technological updates hopefully have been put to bed. So just thanks the public for their patience, as I know Thursday and Friday probably were a little interesting if you tried to call city hall. The windmill at Wedgewood, as reported by Mr. Everly, has been repainted, and then their update to the flooring in the clubhouse has been completed, which should address some safety concerns. The drinking establishment licensing also has been completed in full, and Wedgewood has transitioned to selling those additional alcohol products that that licensure would allow them to do beyond the CMB, which they were previously selling. Weather has improved enough that Public Works has been able to go out and get some road grading and also do some cold patching around town, so it's kind of nice to see weather cooperating with us on some of those maintenance issues. The city is seeing significant interest in the reserve of dumpster amenity as weather has been getting warmer as well, and there's currently about a two-week wait. So just a reminder to people to make their requests sooner rather than later if they would like to get a dumpster. And as of right now, I would make sure that you call before you plan a project because most likely you are gonna have to wait a week or two before a dumpster would be available. Annual utility reports have been submitted for the water, wastewater, and gas systems as required by those regulate, regulation agencies for all of our city-owned utilities. The city's mobile application has now been downloaded 384 times. Just a reminder to residents that do utilize smartphones that that app, which is available on Android or iPhone, is probably the best way to stay up to date on notifications or news from the city, even over our Facebook page, because we can do push notifications via that app. Where Facebook, we have to work within the algorithm. So the city has once again been awarded a Tree City designation for the previous year's activities, so continuing our streak of being only one year behind the city of Newton as far as the longest-running city in Harvey County to be a Tree City. The city did not perform actual utility shut-offs for non-payment due to weather and other factors the past two months. With return of nicer weather, the city will most likely do physical turnoffs again. So just a reminder to those who may have past due bills, they need to make payment arrangements if needed, and then try and observe payment due dates to avoid additional fees and charges. And also a reminder, as has been said tonight with the warmer weather, to please re-register your golf carts, and that animal registration renewals will also be coming online. Generally, we start doing those in April, but May is the technical month when they're need to be done by. And the tentative date for this year's rabies and registration clinic is also Saturday, May 3rd. So come register your animal and stuff in the morning, and then go to Wedgewood and play some cheap golf in the afternoon. And then please also remember with the weather being nicer that animals should be on leash or properly kept under control on one's own property to avoid potential citation for animals at large. And if residents see an animal at large, the best course of action is to dial 911 and report it. We do not like to take animals that are brought into PD and stuff because we don't have kennels or anything to keep them here in city hall. So the PD would much rather just go out and pick up the animal wherever it's running loose than have it brought to city hall, or potentially have an issue with someone bringing in an animal they're not, maybe a stranger too. That is all I have for this evening, unless there's any specific questions.
Counsel, any questions for Ethan?
No questions, but I did have one quick thing before we close, so... If anybody else has questions for Ethan, then I can ask.
You're up.
Oh, good, okay. I just wanted to thank Macy Mueller and the Halsted Community Foundation for all their work that they've been doing in the community. I absolutely love the "I love Halsted" signs that are all out throughout the community. I love the really big one that's on the corner, and you come in and out of town. And I just think, it just does such an awesome job of spreading community love throughout the town. And so, big shout-out to Macy and all of the people there at the Halsted Community Foundation that are working really hard to help the community, so that's it.
Good deal, yeah, she does, she does a great job down there, so... Well, if there's nothing else, counsel, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
We got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Thank you, counsel, we are adjourned.